City of Roses? Yeah, you got the speaker above your head. You do have a speaker above your head. I'll do it. If I can deafen you, then you don't know what's going on. It's pretty low in the PR bag of tricks, but...
It's good to be here. Happy New Year to all of you. Let's pray. Father, your word reminds us in the book of Timothy. It says, "Therefore I exhort first of all that supplications and prayers, intercessions, and giving of thanks be made for all men, for kings and all who are in authority, that we may lead a quiet and peaceable life in all, godliness and reverence; for this is good and acceptable in the sight of God our Savior, who desires all men to be saved and to come to the knowledge of the truth." With that in mind, we pray tonight, God, for our country, for our state, and for our city. We ask you to bless our mayor, our city council, our police chief, our fire chief, our sheriff, and keep all of our first responders safe, including our police officers and firefighters, sheriff's department, and emergency services. God, we would also ask today that you would continue to protect our military at home and abroad. And there's so much uncertainty that happens from day to day. God, protect those police officers that are on the duty each day. And God, I ask that you would grant great wisdom to this council as they deliberate and as we walk out our lives on a daily basis. We pray this in the name of the Christ. Amen.
Our call to order, this session of the Cape Girardeau City Council, our first meeting of 2017, January 9th. Thank you all for being here. Roll call, please.
Wayne Bowen.
Here.
Bob Fox.
Here.
Robbie Gard.
Here.
Victor Gunn.
Here.
Shelley Moore.
Here.
Harry Rediger.
Here.
Joseph Azur, absent.
Adoption of the agenda, if I could have a motion.
Move to adopt.
So I move by Gunn.
Second.
Seconded by Gard. Open favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? We have no presentations tonight. Communications? Pleased this evening to be able to honor with a little ceremony the life of General Seth McKee, who passed last month. I grew up in Cape Girardeau and came to the rank of four-star general. Served our country faithfully worldwide, became the commander of NORAD. Very distinguished former citizen of Cape Girardeau and had a number of his family here. So it was a good, and comments from family also. It was a great session. Was also privileged last week to attend our, the sixth of our annual service award dinners for our employees. Number of them there, one of who is here this evening. But 25-year employees. William Crump and John Ryan from Fire, 25 years. Penny Williams, 25 years, Recreation Division Manager. Mike Tripp, Solid Waste Superintendent from Public Works, 25 years. John Landewy, Chief Construction Inspector, 30 years. From Fire, 30 years. All familiar names. Brian Schaefer, Mark Starnes, from Police, 30 years. Rodney Barker. Buddy Davis, who sits right there. 30 years, Barry Hovis. And two 40-year from Public Works. Rick Randall and Randy McLean, 40 years of service. Our employees mean, all mean so much to us, but those who, whose longevity we can celebrate, 25, 30, and 40 years. They not only have served all of our citizens, but they become our leaders, who influence and nurture our younger employees. And they are worth their, their time and what they earn in gold. They're very, very deserving of that honor. It was a great evening, it always is, and Scott, I compliment you on, on that was well done, that evening, and it was, it was a great evening. Wanted to recognize all of those here at the council meeting. I would like to call attention to next week on Thursday, the 19th, at the Chamber, 5 to 7. A meeting to kind of go through the logistics of our Main Street project that'll be beginning here in the first quarter of the year from Broadway through to Independence. That'll be at the Chamber Office from 5 to 7. And I wanted to highlight also a story in the paper this morning about new police dogs. And I happened to have a couple of people come to me today, said, "I want to help with that in some way." Excuse me, and I recommended that they write a check to our Cape Area Community Foundation and designate those funds for, for the police dogs, and I think there are others out there. So if anyone has thought about helping with that, I would ask them to do that or else call me or the, or the office or Chief Blair, and they'll be, they'll be given the information. That can be a great project and have citizens be a part of that is, is rewarding. Let's see, I think that's it. Other communications?
Mr. Mayor, fellow council members, as you know, Monday is the day we honor Dr. Martin Luther King, a real hero for our entire nation, and I'm proud to say there are a number of events in Cape Girardeau, and I encourage everyone to participate as they can, keeping in mind the admonition that it should be a day on, not a day off, to at least do something to remember the legacy of Dr. King. So there is a, the morning of, of that day, there's a memorial breakfast at the Salvation Army. That lunch, that afternoon, there's a humanitarian luncheon that they're encouraging people to bring canned goods to, to help stock the food banks. And then on the 18th, that Wednesday, there's the annual celebration dinner at the university. I appreciate the city being a silver sponsor for that event. And the speaker there will be Dr. Mary Frances Berry, the former head of the U.S. Civil Rights Commission. So definitely a lot of events. There's more than that. There's seven or eight that I know of in the city. So encourage everyone in the city to take advantage and honor and continue with the legacy of Dr. King.
Very good. Thank you, Councilman Bowen. I will be attending the breakfast on Monday and also the dinner on Wednesday evening. But there are a number of events and opportunities, so I encourage all our citizens to be involved in that celebration of that great American. Other council? Staff?
Yes, a couple of things that I'd like to echo what you said about our service awards, and you're always good to point out at our service awards banquet how important the family is to, to the service of folks. It's when, when you work for the city, oftentimes you get called out in, in the worst type of circumstances. You know, we don't call people out in good weather and, and when something bad's not happening, we call it out when, when those things are happening. So those families are under a lot of stress and 40 years of, of service or 25, 30, the family's been under that stress for those times too, and so I want to recognize them as, as you always do and, and I appreciate your kind words during that time. We had recently had the Health Expo for the city and I think it had a real good turnout for that. Then the, we do have the holiday schedule with, as mentioned, the MLK is a holiday for employees, so that changes your trash schedule and those types of things, so draw people's attention to that. And then the CIP, we do have, the draft is in your packets, and then we'll anticipate having a discussion at the next study session on the 23rd regarding, regarding the CIPs. We move toward approval of that over the next three or four meetings. So those are the updates that, that I have.
Okay, we have no public hearings this evening. Anyone here to appear before the council on any item that is on the agenda? Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, my name is Jeff Heisey. I live at 705 Penny. I am the Chairman of Board of Examiners. And I understand that at this time you're all going to be discussing the dismembering of the Board of Examiners. Last week I got a phone call from the Missourian, and at that time reporter informed me that the council was going to disband the Board of Examiners. And I was also told that at the last meeting that I was supposed to be brought across as a, to be reappointed to the board because my time was up. And at that time I was informed that someone, either, somebody brought across the floor that needed different ones. Okay, fine. But you had a board that's fully manned. You had three individuals who were willing to go back and do it again. We don't get paid. We don't ask for any compensations, but we do get a privilege of doing a board and coming and making sure that either a plumber, electrician, gas fitter, gas installers, whatever, whoever's involved in the building trades comes before us and we make sure that they are qualified. Whether it's by years of experience or coming in from another place to work in our city. We make sure that we give everybody a fair chance. And right now I think that we give everybody a fair chance. They come in, we may ask them questions, then again, we may not. Somebody may know them, somebody may not. But it all comes down to what, you know, we feel that we are the best option not to be putting it over onto the city staff who has already got other things they're doing, inspections and everything. I think it's at this time that, you know, we need to reconsider and bring back, keep the Board of Examiners for that.
Okay. Any questions of Mr. Heisey from council?
In the last, say, two to three years, have you rejected any applications?
Yes, we have, and the reason is that they were not qualified for that particular license that they were wanting to go for. We had one individual who came in and he wanted a installer's license. We told him by way he had everything in there, he was more qualified to become a journeyman electrician. And at that time he said, "Okay, great, I'll do that." And at that, and then we approved him to be, take the electrical, journeyman electrical test. And as far as I know, he passed it on the first try.
Okay, any other questions? No matter how this goes, this evening in the vote, Ms. Heisey, I, we value our, our boards and commissions and know that they all serve their time with no compensation and dedicated to our city. So I thank you for your service. And we'll see how that, that goes, but we'll pass that on to all, all the rest also. We've done that with, with other boards and yours, your years of service and the others are greatly, greatly recognized.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else to appear before the council on any item that is on the agenda? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council, staff. My name is Fred Barnard. I own multiple properties in Cape Girardeau. I also hold two contractors' license and have for many, many years. I have personally talked to each and every one of you at one time or another, and you have lamented at the apathy and non-attendance at these judicial sessions that you have. These are legal sessions and it affects everybody in this city. Now, I've also talked to a couple of people and they've told me that they, they thought we might be going down a slippery slope, that we might be having the same people interrogate people, for lack of a better word, in regard to getting a license. I don't think there's any doctor that would want me to be on an examining board for their license or any attorney or most any other profession that I can think of. These people are willing to do, as Mr. Mayor said, as each one of you do. I've also talked to people and they said, "Well, you know, we, we expanded the board a little bit and we've allowed outside people who do not live in the city to be on this board." I have a problem with that. We don't require any city staffer, anybody that works for the city that gets paid, except for you, of course, which I understand completely, to be a citizen of this city. That doesn't keep them from holding a license or anything else. They either have an expertise or they do not. I suggest to you that you utilize these people who are willing to give their time and expertise, as each of you have done. You're not compensated very well for the job you do and the amount of time you spend, and I applaud each and every one of you for it. But let's not move away. We've already done away with one board. And we've got a great staff here, we really do. But do we want to take it away from six or eight people who make that decision, that recommendation? They really don't have any power. The power is all left here. But do we not want to hear from these people who are experts in their field? Each one of you have an expertise. They feel like they have an expertise too. And you and I know they do because you gave them a license. Now, my point is very simply, let's take advantage of these people. So we have a few people who live outside of the city. I live outside of the city. I own multiple pieces of property here. I feel like I have a very, very vested interest in this city. I'd like you to at least look at this and see if maybe six or eight people would be a better recommendation board for this particular activity than one or two people on the city staff that don't have enough people and enough time to get all the jobs done and they break their backs doing it. I just ask you to, to relook at it, rethink it, and think if this is really a good thing, if we really want to move the citizens away, and this meeting is a particular good example. You have one person that lives in the city here as a citizen. No one else here is a citizen of this city. Where is everyone? This is a legislative session that you make laws. Is that where we want to go? I think we're slipping down that slippery slope if we continually encourage your citizens, our citizens, to be exempt or move away from anything that happens within the city. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak for the council on any item that is on the agenda? Eric, if you'll take us through the consent agenda.
Bill number 16 dash 219, an ordinance renaming Wigwam Lane to Walden Boulevard in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, and ordinance renaming Wigwam Lane to Walden Boulevard in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Number 17 dash 02, a resolution authorizing city manager to execute an agreement with Carver, Murphy, and Tully, Inc. for design and bidding pay services for the runway 220 partial overlay and rehabilitation of the Cape Girardeau Regional Airport. Number 17 dash 03, a resolution authorizing city manager to execute an escrow agreement with Meyer Properties LP and Montgomery Bank NA for Block Gardens in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill number 17 dash 04, a resolution authorizing city manager to execute an escrow agreement with Meyer Properties LP and Montgomery Bank NA for Little Mac East in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill number 17 dash 06, a resolution authorizing city manager to execute a license and indemnity agreement with Marquette Tech District Foundation, Inc. for installation of communication conduit and fiber optic cable on Main Street in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Number 17 dash 08, a resolution authorizing city manager to execute amendments number seven and number eight to the General Services Department with Jacobs Engineering Group, Inc. for the wastewater treatment plant project in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri.
Counsel, you've heard the consent agenda. Do I have a motion for approval? So moved by Fox.
Second.
Seconded by Bowen. Discussion?
Mayor, I'd like to stay for 14 and 15 due to financial reasons through my...
Okay, you got that, Bruce? And also, as I mentioned at the study session, I would like staff to convey a thank you on behalf of council and also staff for, to contractor Nip Kelly on item number 11. They responded very quickly in, in, in a situation where we had two ends of Independence closed for a short period of time, which put a real hardship on some businesses and some residents. And they jumped in and, and I think completed that project in three days. So if you would convey that on behalf of all of us, that would be great. Any other discussion? Seeing none of those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, new ordinances, bill number 17 01, an ordinance amending chapter two and chapter 15 of the city code by repealing the Board of Examiners and enacting new sections 15 dash 426 and 15 dash 427 regarding processing of applications. First read. So moved by Bowen.
Second.
And seconded by Gard. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I think for informational purposes, not necessarily for us, for the people that may be watching this on TV.
Could staff give us a little synopsis of why this came about?
I can, Molly can follow up, I don't know if Alex as well, but we had, I think staff had brought this up a couple of times over the last couple of years. And the main reason that we had brought it up in, in four was the fact that we did not have enough people asking to be a part of the positions that were opening and had had to reappoint people beyond what our typical limits were. And so we had that and, and the first, in the first two times, the board was responsive and got some more candidates. And so that was the reason why we had had that. Well, during the discussion of that, we, there was a discussion about other cities had made it a staff function and that, that there were some efficiencies gained in that by not having to have the, the evening meetings and they felt like a lot of the, the legwork was done by staff and then the value of that, and, and some cities are very happy with staff doing it, the others, you know, do have a board. And so I don't know if there are other things, Molly or Alex, that you wanted to add?
Mayor, council, I would just reiterate what Mr. Meyer said, primarily that the reason it was brought forward in the past was the difficulty in, in finding applicants to fill the role of the board that met all of the requirements. And then secondly, as Mr. Meyer stated, staff reviews all of the applications and makes sure that all of the documentation and all of the qualifications have been met before they bring it forward to the board. One, so that there are meetings held unnecessarily for someone who doesn't qualify. And we don't want to waste anyone's time, but staff is already performing that function before it would even come before the Board of Examiners. So it seems somewhat redundant to have the board basically verify what staff had already checked.
Alex, any other comments? Okay. Any other discussion?
I'll add one piece.
Go ahead.
From a liability and a standpoint in a court of law, this is to me, it worrisome that if we ever got into a situation where staff would ever let a someone who's petitioning to take those exams and, and then, you know, a jury of their peers, AKA the Examiners Board, denied them that opportunity. What kind of, the legal ramifications on the city could be pretty big if we denied them that. The analogy that I kind of used was if there were a board of bankers and could decide if I could bank in the city limits of Cape, and I don't, I don't, I don't like that, that's I don't think that's the way we need to be handling that.
Other questions, comments?
By understanding, we had four meetings of the Board of Examiners last year, is that correct?
Yes.
And was that for a lack of applicants being...
As far as I know, it was for the lack of applicants wanting to come into the, having come to the front of us. And no, as one person said, I think it was you, Mr. Gard, no. We look at what they're saying as far as their application. And there are times where we do ask a specific question. Especially if someone's want to be a plumber. And you have to know, figure out the sizing of a water main coming into a house and/or a business. Yes, it may be on the Prince, but you still have to figure it out. Same thing with the electrician. He's going to have to figure out what size box he's going to have to have for to come into a house and/or a business. And a lot of times we may ask a simple question, is that? No, look, Adam says, "Well, what size of water main comes into a house?" Most of the time, it's three quarters. But again, again, you get into one of these big mansions outsides, just outside, inside of Cape here, a one-inch main's going to be required. What size sewer line, drain line is required for a commode? What's the minimum? Three inch? Okay. There are times where I've asked that question for someone who's going to become a plumber. Then again, we've had the electricians ask the same thing about the electrical, gas fitter, the same thing. It's more than just looking at their qualifications. We just want to see where they stand at.
My concern is that, my concern is this. If you guys ever got into a situation where you denied somebody, we are having a resident advisory board deny somebody when the city staff has said that, that they, that they were qualified. And in the same respect, we don't have the airport board negotiate contracts with Cape Air or, or certain things like that. There are just certain jobs that in that respect, I feel need to be handled by the city staff, and we're already paying them to do that.
No, that's how you feel. That's how you feel. I can, I'm not going to argue with you about it.
Okay, very good.
We also just say, you know, yes or no.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heisey.
Any other discussion?
Just one other point, I guess, is that if, if it does become a staff function, that, all those functions are open records. And so if you ever have a question about somebody, you're certainly welcome to come in and, and check their qualifications and see all, all the information that, that has been reviewed and those things as well. I don't know if that's a, feels like a consolation prize or not, but at least just so everybody else knows and the people on TV know that it, it is an open process that is open today, as, as it is, and it will remain open.
Any other discussion? How many applications in the last 12 months?
In 2016, the board met on four separate occasions. It reviewed a total of 26 applications. We always have a large influx of applications from the CTC when a class graduates. So at the March meeting, 18 of the applicants were students of CTC's electrical program.
Okay. I'll also say that I'm mindful of the, the issue of staff time, but based on the information that we've received and that we've heard over the last few years, it seems like this will actually save staff time, not add to it, since the function's already essentially being done. being done. You know, I'm definitely mindful of trying to encourage more engagement with the city, and I'll say that this is an unusual board, because typically the other ones draw significant numbers of volunteers. We're looking at another appointment tonight that has ten applications for two positions, and all of them that I know of are very qualified. So I think, I think city-wide, we do have a lot of interest, and I would encourage everyone on the board, if we do move in this direction, to look to get in planning and zoning, historic preservation commission, others where your expertise would be valuable and, and helpful for the city.
And I will re-echo, thanks to, as, as passed, thanks to the board, and we'll recognize that. Here's the services we do with all boards. Are those in favor, aye? Aye. Opposed? Bill number seventeen dash oh-five, an ordinance vacating a portion of unimproved Sunset Boulevard right-of-way running from north from Meriwether right-of-way in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. First read. By Gard, seconded by Fox. Any discussion? Those in favor, aye? Those opposed? Finally, bill number seventeen dash oh-seven, ordinance approving the record plat of LIL MAC, Little Mac East subdivision, first read. So a move by Gard, seconded by Fox. Any discussion? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? And per our discussion at the study session, the appointments to our new Convention and Visitors Bureau Executive Board, the three-year commitment, appointment would be to Joel Nykirk, the two-year appointment would be our city manager, Scott Meyer, and the one-year partial term would be to Mark Durnberger, if I could have a motion.
I'd like to move for Quintel Anoto to be the nominee for the one-year position.
Okay, we have a, a motion, is that a, an amendment? That'd be amended motion.
I meant, I mean, I made the motion, I didn't hear that there was another one on the floor.
Didn't we, didn't we have a motion? We didn't have a motion, did we? Okay, we didn't have a motion.
That's right. You're reading the.
Mark Durnberger to be the one.
Well, I was asking for a motion for Joel Nykirk, Scott Meyer, and Mark Durnberger, per our discussion at, at the study session. So your motion was to, for Joel, Joel Nykirk.
Joel Nykirk for the three-year, Scott Meyer for the two-year.
And Quintel Anoto for the one-year. Is there a second? Seconded by Fox. Any discussion?
I'd say, as I did at the study session, that Quintel Anoto is a national, internationally known expert on hospitality management, on tourism, extremely qualified to work with our multiple committees at the City of Missouri.
Yeah, we obviously have a number of qualified people in this one, as you mentioned, ten for this board. Other discussion? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
And those opposed? Aye.
Aye.
I would suggest you have a roll call. Let's go roll call vote.
What are we voting on, the motion to, the first one, or this?
The only, only motion was for Joel Nykirk, three, Scott Meyer, two, and Quintel Anoto, one.
I'm confused on that, I apologize. I thought our original motion was for...
We didn't, we didn't have a motion.
All right.
I was asking for a motion.
All right.
We didn't have a motion. So let's do a roll call vote. Victor Gunn? You want to wait?
I would have went, I, I, excuse me, I would have went back and I thought we were just...
Thought we were doing them one at a time.
I thought we were doing them one at a time.
No.
So there's no motion, the original?
There's no motion for Mark, well, I wanted to make a motion for Mark Durnberger if it wasn't so moved, I apologize.
Well, okay, the motion, the motion is for, the motion is moved and seconded, it is for Joel Nykirk, three-year term, Scott Meyer, two-year term, and Quintel Anoto for a one-year term. Now.
All right.
Victor Gunn?
Aye.
Shelley Moore?
Aye.
Harry Rediger? Nay. Joseph Reserve is absent. Wayne Bowen?
Aye.
Bob Fox?
Aye.
Robbie Gard?
Nay.
Four yeas. It passes. It passes. Okay, so we got Quintel Anoto, and, folks, we got probably four on there that could serve well in this one, this thing, so we're, we're not, we're not, we're not really debating, debating people, because we have, I see several on there that could be, be good. We were, we were basing that on our conversation at, originally at the, at the study session. Okay. Is there any other business coming before us?
Moved adjourned.
By Gunn, seconded by Gard. All of them in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, we are adjourned.